Folks, I do believe I have 6:30 and it's time to start. We'll just bow our heads in a moment of silence before I call the meeting door. Amen. Welcome to the forum. Commissioners, you've seen the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for the forum? Have a motion from Commissioner Widmer. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. This is an opportunity for you, the public, to ask questions of the commissioners and you'll get a response. During a meeting, you will not get a response simply because you're observing a business meeting when the council is in full session. But this is a forum specifically set up so our citizens can ask us questions and we can possibly answer or have staff answer or get you an answer. So the floor is now open for anyone who wants to address the council. Nobody's going to jump up tonight. We're going to sit here and talk.
My name is Peter Williams. We have a cottage at 226 North Carolina Terrace. I've written or spoken to several of you over the last couple of months about the dramatic increase in traffic on North Carolina Terrace, principally people coming from outside of Montreat to fill large five-gallon water bottles at the spring. And it's an issue of concern, although I really don't know. I know Tim and I have had several conversations. I talked to Ken. I don't know that there's a solution, but I can tell you that it's been, had a significant impact if you talk to the residents, Jane Holt, Ellen Henchon, the Ledgertons. What's happened is, is that just by the law of large numbers, a lot of people have discovered the presence of the spring and that's attracted frankly, a whole wide range of people. Everybody from people that appear to literally be living out of their cars to people who just don't want to drink tap water to people who see it as a chance to fill their five-gallon gallons of water and not pay for it, which is, you know, free country, so that's not bad. Having said that, I did meet with the fire marshal from Black Mountain and the Montreat police chief to talk to them about illegal parking, cars parked on the road. And I called them after coming home one evening and seeing an 18-foot box truck illegally parked at the bend on North Carolina Terrace with probably 15 or 20 bottles of, five-gallon bottles in the open truck ramped down on the road. And I don't know if it was a commercial enterprise. I don't know whether the guy was just, has a big house and lots of water filters, but, you know, that kind of raised my dander. And so I met with the fire marshal and the police chief. And I think they agreed that it was a problem. One of the things that's exacerbated was that in the last two years, they've put gravel pullouts, which have encouraged people to come and park there. Having said that, they both felt that it would, they could not make a recommendation to eliminate parking in that area simply because in some respects, that excess, that gravel pullout allows for emergency vehicles to potentially get by. But I reminded them and showed them articles and sent them to some of you about the 1993 fire where two houses in that immediate vicinity burned to the ground. And one of the contributing factors was the fact the fire trucks couldn't get past an illegally parked car on North Carolina Terrace. So that's kind of a long litany. I don't know what the solution is. I do know that this has been also, in talking to the police chief, an issue with trails and, you know, other conveniences and playgrounds that Montreat offers. But the issue here really is, and I'm just talking to you as a homeowner, as a parent and a grandparent. I live on a dead-end street. There's no reason that cars should be coming up there that are outside of Montreat other than to use the spring water. I'm happy with people to walk there and fill their water bottles. I'm happy for people to go there and fill their water pitchers. But to watch people sit there illegally parked for, you know, long periods of time, people lining up and then come and park or drive around a very narrow turnaround at the end of the road, which is the only out from that area. I'm telling you, there's going to be a problem. I don't know when it's going to happen. I don't know how it's going to happen, whether a car's going to get hit, whether a child's going to get hit coming back from clubs. But sadly, what has been a cherished Montreat place to go and take your children and grandchildren has turned into a public nuisance. So Ken and I had a conversation. It got kind of heated. I apologize. You know, the reality is, is unless you live on North Carolina Terrace, and frankly, you're not going to hear from a lot of the residents because most people, they're kind of, you know, it is what it is. But every one of them agrees it's a problem, so.
Peter, that street is marked dead end, isn't it?
Yes, it is. No, it's not marked dead end anywhere that I'm aware of.
I thought I remember at one time, there was a sign on the right, right as you come off of West Virginia and...
I don't believe it's marked dead end.
Okay.
You know, I, look, I think the issue here is that obviously, Montreat's an attractive place. Nobody wants to see Winn Lithia get shut down. Nobody wants to see, but I also don't want to see it become a circus, which is, you know, frankly, what's happening. To see a box truck with 15 or 25-gallon bottles of water on a Monday night, I called you, Tim, right away when I saw it. I mean, it's not the first time the guy's been there and I seriously doubt whether it's the last time. It's just a question of, you know, Ken told me he rides his bike up there all the time but never sees any issues. You know, it's sort of, I can't tell you it's, you know, a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week problem, but it is a problem. And it shouldn't be happening in Montreat. So enough said. Thanks for letting me...
Thank you, Peter. We'll continue to monitor that and look at it. Any other commissioner have any questions or thoughts?
I just have a question is, you know, even though the gravel pullouts have encouraged the parking, we can't put no parking signs there that would make parking illegal, whereas right now, I presume parking isn't illegal if it's on the roadside.
What I suggested, what I had suggested in the discussion... Could you stand up at the microphone, please? What I had suggested was, if you recall, on the corner, right where the bend begins coming up North Carolina Terrace, there are landscape rocks. And I had suggested putting landscape rocks in the immediate vicinity of the, of the spring as well. Nobody, I think Tim said, nobody likes seeing signs and I certainly don't. I know that was, there was no other choice on Lookout Road when we had parking problems by the trails. But I haven't talked to the Public Works Department. I think that the gravel pullout on the left-hand side as you drive up North Carolina Terrace was put in to try to deal with maybe the erosion problem from a creek. And, but you know, it's the, you know, the consequence of unintended consequence. I mean, it's, it's, that's where the box truck was parked, blocking Mary Hills driveway, but also, you know, two wheels out on the road. So, I mean, I'm not a big fan of no parking signs, but on the other hand, I'm also not a fan of, you know, of attracting crowds of people to Montreat because they can get free water.
You and Tanner ought to have quite a conversation. Tanner has people up on his trails from everywhere, right Tanner? A lot of people are attracted to Montreat.
The difference is, the difference is, and I think it's really important, you know, I did the research and went back and looked and it's irrefutable that there was a very serious fire in that immediate area. Two houses burned to the ground and we're damn lucky that it didn't get a lot worse. And they had to bring in a tow truck, a special vehicle, to move a car that was illegally parked, not in the immediate vicinity of the spring, but on that grass area right in front of, not linger longer. And two years ago, Jane Holt had a medical emergency and the emergency vehicle, the car had to be moved, but somebody was there that could move it. But, you know, you can't always count on that. I mean, you know, bad things happens at the wrong time.
During that fire, they brought in helicopters that dipped water out of Lake Susan and took up there and put the fire out, but you could see the trailers from North Carolina Terrace where the fire ran up the hill. It was something years ago. Anyone else? Peter, we'll have, have we talked to Barry about that and see if Barry has any solutions? Savannah?
I'll ask Barry too, what solutions he has. And I also just wanted to mention that if you do see a vehicle parked illegally, you can always call the police department. You know, certainly if it's a public safety hazard, they'll take care of it.
My friend back here just knifed out. This is on Google, so you know. Just to give you an idea of the magnitude of the problem, if you Google "spring water", you're going to get a big picture of Winn Lithia. So the whole world knows about it. One person finds out, they tell somebody, two people know, two people tell somebody, now four, four know about it, now it's eight. It's geometric.
People have thought for years that the lithium in a spring like that, Winn Lithia, was supposed to be special. Lived in Bessemer City for 22 years. We had a big lithium mine and not everybody in Bessemer City were happy. Because lithium's supposed to be a drug that eases off the anxieties and so forth. Who's next?
Can I ask Peter a question?
Sure.
Peter, I'm Tom Widmer. Thank you for your comments. One thing that maybe you can clarify is, you talked about the illegally parked vehicles, but there are no signs to say no parking. And in Montreat, if you have two wheels off the road, it's a legally parked vehicle. So can you just elaborate on the illegal vehicles that you're talking about that are illegally parked? Just so I can better understand it?
Well, I mean, if a box truck is parked with two wheels out and there's three or four feet of the box truck on the road, in my mind, that's an illegally parked car. But, you know, we can disagree on the semantics, but, you know, look, this is, the issue here is the, the problem has magnified because now there is parking access there. Okay? There's one in, right in front of the house that caused the big kerfuffle a couple of years ago and they wanted to put a driveway in right next to Winn Lithia. So, and now there's one that I think the town put in to stop erosion. You know, I'm just, I'm just telling you that from a homeowner's point of view, living on a dead-end street with children and grandchildren and people walking back and forth to clubs, in my judgment, and I've been around a few years, you know, I can't buy this gray hair honestly, I think there's going to be a problem. I don't know if it's going to be a car getting hit. I don't know if it's going to be a break-in. I don't know if it's going to be a child getting hit. But we have people that are coming into a dead-end street that are coming around a very tight turnaround at the end that aren't familiar with the area and really shouldn't be there.
I understand your concerns and I've seen them myself, but I just wanted to understand, as soon as you say illegally parked, that throws it into a whole different situation that is controllable. As, as Tim just said earlier, you can call the police on that, but it, you know, if it's...
I don't think signs are going to stop anybody. I think the only way to do it is, and, and, look, you know, I'm telling you about the gravel pullouts. People, a lot of, some people just pull right up to the, right up to the spring and park right there. If it only fill in a five-gallon bucket, you know, they figure they got time.
Right, and that is illegally parked.
And a car can get by them because the car will then use the gravel pullout to get around them. So, you know, it's, you know, I'm not saying I've got an easy solution. My, my thought was put landscape rocks in, no signs, people can still walk to it, they can ride their bike to it, they can do what they want, but they can't park there.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're going to adjourn in just a second and wait till 7 o'clock to start our regular meeting if no one else is going to want to speak. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn? Have a motion from Kitty Fouchet. Commissioner Fouchet, adjourned, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion and our questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned until 7 o'clock when our regular meeting starts. Stand and face the flag and spread the flag of allegiance together, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, with the same heart, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Stand quietly for one of the signs before the court, please.
Commissioners, you have seen the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet to have a second. Have a second from Commissioner Widmer. All those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye. And as we adopt the agenda, we also adopt the consent agenda, which were the August 10th Public Forum Meeting Minutes and the August 10th Town Council Meeting Minutes. My communication tonight is my wife has run me out of the house and made me go to work somewhere else. I'm the interim director of the Chamber of Commerce in Black Mountain until the first of the year. And by then, I'll be worn out. But I'm only working a few days a week. Savannah knows how to get in touch with me. Angela knows. I'm not going to tell Barry or the chief. But folks know how to get in touch with me. And I'll be up here when I'm needed. But right now, I am spending about at least 24 hours a week working down there. And I thought I was the first. But when I looked at a scrapbook today, I found out that Andy Andrews was the Executive Secretary of the Chamber of Commerce of Black Mountain for years and years. And was quite well thought of there as he is here. Okay, let's move on. Oh, I did also want to say that Joanne and John Ellington are leaving Montreat. We hate to lose them. But Joanne is not in the best of health these days, and it's just best that they move. They will come back often. John had almost 20 years with the college as a professor there and loved volleyball. Was it volleyball, Tom? Loved volleyball. Matter of fact, he loved it so much, they ended up giving him a signed volleyball at the end of the season. He was also a missionary, and he's quite a fixture around this community. I guarantee you, when you're going out about 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, you can find John walking somewhere. So we're going to miss them. Okay. Savannah, do you have anything tonight?
I do. I just briefly want to say thank you to the commissioners, the staff, the community. Everyone's been so welcoming, and I really appreciate it. It's been a great first couple of weeks here in Montreat. Secondly, I wanted to let you all know that the auditors were here yesterday and today doing their fieldwork. Everything is going well, and we're on track to have the audit completed on time. And then last thing is just to mark your calendars for October 24th. We'll be having a planning retreat. Exact location and time will be announced a little bit later. That's it for me.
Thank you, Savannah.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
I just have a quick question. At last month's meeting, somebody mentioned that Halls Towing towed that young man's car and charged him, I don't know what the amount was, over $200, and told him, the young man, that it was so high because they give half of it to Montreat. We don't have any kind of such arrangement with Halls Towing. Could we have somebody just look into that and set them straight or change recommended towing firms?
Yes, we will look into it, take care of it.
Maybe staff knows something about that.
David? Chief David Aaron?
Yes, sir. The short answer to that is it's a complete fabrication. We have no such arrangement like that. As a matter of fact, when we called for a tow truck, we called dispatch and asked for next rotation so that it avoids any appearance of bias. So there's no truth to that whatsoever.
So I appreciate our policy, but do we know that what was said was not truthful? That we had heard about what Halls was splitting the fee with us? Do we know?
Are you asking about what the conversation was between whomever he spoke to at the tow yard?
Yes.
I can't really speak to that since I wasn't there, but it doesn't seem likely.
Okay, great. Good to know.
We were looking for other sources of income. Might be a little underhanded, but commissioners, you have received the administration reports, the planning and zoning report, police department report, public works and water sanitation, streets, finance, and additional planning and zoning information. Are there any questions of any of those, on any of those reports? Seeing no one jump up, I assume there's not. There is no old business tonight, so we'll move right on into news business. This is a, can I have a motion for open a public hearing regarding Montreat Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan? Yeah, y'all want to say something? Public comment. I skipped right over. My bad. Anyone?
Jean Norris, 192 Mississippi Road. We had an encounter with eight Guineas as we went up Virginia Road a couple of nights ago, and it was a wonderful thing to see. And I personally am very much in favor of Guineas being made the town bird of Montreat because it's just exactly silly enough.
He has been after me for years to get a proclamation out about that the Guinea's the official foul of Montreat, and I might just do it. Hey.
Good evening. I'm well, thank you. Richard Dubose. I just want to come back. I communicated directly with Commissioner Widmer on this, but I wanted to express appreciation to whoever revised the draft that you all are going to be discussing this evening from last month's draft. I told Tom in my email to him that I really appreciated, felt heard by the commissioners from the sentiments that I expressed last month. And I'd already told him that privately. I thought it would be appropriate to say that to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Seeing no one raise their hand, we'll move on. Old business. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I gotta hand myself.
Okay, I'm good. Okay. Angie and my wife, they try to keep me straight. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion to open the public hearing on the comprehensive plan.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion from Mayor Protim and a second from Kent Otto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Floor is open for public hearing on the comprehensive plan. Don't everybody rush forward at once. Okay. We have a motion here. Comprehensive plan. Need to revise it. Okay, public hearing. Do I have a closure? Have a motion to close it. So moved from Tom Widmer to close it. Second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Otto. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item B is discussion of modern, of the Montreat Comprehensive Plan by the Board of Commissioners. There's a motion there to be made. If we want to make it, then we'll have the discussion.
I move to revise the Montreat Modern Comprehensive Plan.
Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet to revise the plan.
Maybe I should have said Montreat.
No, we've revised it.
Slightly.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I second the motion to, to, to discuss revision of the Montreat Comprehensive Plan.
Tom, will you read the revision, please, so everyone will understand what the change is?
Yes, I just need to get it up here. Bear with me, please. I'm looking at it in the packet. Angie, do you have that page number on the packet?
Page 26 is in the packet.
That's probably right.
No, 26. Those were proposed by a citizen. Those weren't the...
Mr., do you have it?
Angie, just a second. How old is it? It's not 26?
No.
No.
The revision.
Oh, no.
The revision.
The proposed revision.
Well, there were, there were ones that were not included in the flag on page 26. I did not, I don't think those were the revisions you were referring to. Those are probably suggested.
That's right. Those were the suggestions, but...
Page 134?
134. Thank you. That's it. I apologize for the stumbling. The first proposed change is in Development Objective Number 7, which is on page 55 of the plan. And we are suggesting that the words, "and guided by the above vision statements and objectives," be inserted along with citizens and. So the new development objective with revisions would be, "In the spirit of the long-term success of the town of Montreat, comma, and guided by the above vision statements and objectives, comma, work collaboratively with citizens and the institutions of the town, including but not limited to Montreat College and the Mountain Retreat Association on any future development plans to support the vitality and future of the institutions and the town." So there's just eight, nine words that were added. The second change is in next steps, which is page 59 of the plan, page 135 of today's packet. We are suggesting or recommending that the second bulleted point, which reads, "Identify internal and external pathways to secure new funding resources as allowed by state law." That it be deleted and a new bullet point in first position be inserted. And it would read, "Secure new revenue sources due to the significant dependency on the residential tax base, perenn, as mostly all of the land owned by large institutional landowners is not subject to property taxes," close perenn, "and growing demand for municipal services," period. That's the extent of the changes.
Okay, we have a motion to revise the Montreat Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan with those revisions read by Commissioner Widmer. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item C is adoption of the Montreat Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. We just approved the revisions. Now, this is for adoption. Kayla, do you need to say anything about this, or you and I have had enough of it? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the Montreat Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan via ordinance 23-09-001.
Have a motion from Commissioner Otto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry. This time, I want to stop for just a second and thank Daniel Hewitt, Mary Grambling, Maury Grambling, John Casper, Bill Seaman, Dr. Paul Mauer, Richard Dubose, and Maggie Elliott. I see four of you here. Would y'all stand up just a second? These folks worked tirelessly for over a year with the others, getting this plan in shape, wordsmithing it, and trying to make sure that it would be palatable for the community and a good direction for the town. And I want to thank them very, very much. Thank you, guys. I won't miss our little get-togethers. Let's see. Oath of office for Town Manager Savannah Parish. Savannah, do you want to do this?
Let's do it. I, Savannah Parish, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I, Savannah Parish, further affirm that I will well and truly execute the duties of my office of Town Manager according to the best of my skill and ability, according to law, so help me God.
Thank you so much.
Here, let me take the last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're all starting on a new venture, our first town manager. And Dave's the only guy in the office up here anymore, aren't you, David? Aren't you the only guy left in the office up here?
I am the only one.
Okay. All right. Update on bank signature cards. Angie?
This is just a little maintenance. We're removing interim Town Manager Ben Blackburn, adding Savannah Parish as Town Manager, and then just collecting the usual suspects along the way. The mayor, Commissioner Fouchet, the police chief, and myself.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that at all? Okay, a motion to have new signatures, added signatures to the bank cards. Have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to add Savannah Parish, Tim Helms, Catherine Kitty Fouchet, David Arant, and Angela Murphy to the town of Montreat's banking signature cards at First Bank.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Otto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Graybeard Mountain Trailhead held parking signs. Kayla?
Hi, everybody. Really close to me. I don't know how to adjust this.
Pull the podium back. Pull the podium back.
Pull the podium? Duh! Sorry. It's not, not a great way to start this. All right, well, Josh is getting us started. Um, just for the record, my name's Kayla DiChristina, and I am the Town of Montrit's zoning administrator. Tonight, I am presenting to you a request by Tanner Pickett with the Mountain Retreat Association to install parking signs up at the Graybeard Mountain Trailhead. I can just go ahead and, and start. Presentation's not that exciting. Um, so the purpose of the request is to place new parking signs in front of each of the existing parking spaces that is up at the trailhead. And the reason that this request is coming before you is because the area that this parking is in is within the green, the green space agreement. So it requires the Board of Commissioners approval to place the signs up there. So in your packet are proofs of signs that already exist around the town. There's some at the Lookout Trailhead, signs, I believe, near Lake Susan. Um, these are all considered private regulatory signs by the zoning ordinance. Since these signs relate to a private entity, they're not official regulatory signs, and they indicate things like directions, entrances and exits, available parking facilities, et cetera. These signs are limited to two square feet in size, and they have to be at least two feet away from vehicular and pedestrian travelways. And also, these signs are prohibited from being copies or imitations of official signs or give the appearance of having official status without actually having an official purpose. So those are the relevant sections of the zoning ordinance. So like I said, the applicant proposes to install these signs up at the trailhead. They plan to mount the signs on either trees or freestanding poles in front of each of the existing parking spaces. This is not a request for additional parking. It's just to mark the existing parking spots that are up there. Um, the signs are intended, are, right now, intended to include the language that's on the screen before you. It's the last four bullets. So parking in designated spots only, numbers for each of the spots, no overnight parking, and then violators may be towed at owner's expenses. Next slide. I've also attached to the memo, like I said, some examples of similar signs that the applicant already has throughout town. The applicant also indicated, uh, in their correspondence with staff, um, that they are amenable to any changes in the proposed language, those four bullets, that they had submitted. And one of the purposes of putting these signs up there is to provide a platform for permitting these parking spaces in the future, which the applicant has indicated that some residents of the town have expressed interest in. So the only other piece I have is that, should the board consider granting this request, I would recommend three conditions on it. That they include language on the sign that clearly indicates that the parking rules and towing are being enforced by the MRA and not the town. No additional parking is approved with this request, and that the proposed signs have to conform with all the pertinent sections of the zoning ordinance. So that's all I've got. Do you all have any questions?
Uh, have you and MRA come to an agreement on what the signs and everything? Tanner, are you okay with...
The signs that we have, uh, Tanner Pickett, um, the Communications for Montrit. The, I don't know if you got to see the slide where it showed the actual parking signs that, uh... Uh, no, go over, one more, it's the, the white ones with the numbers on them.
I don't know if that's in there.
Oh, okay.
They're in your packet.
They're in your packet. If you parked at the Lookout Trailhead parking lot, you've seen them. We've numbered these spots. So part of it is to organize the spots better. There's, uh, there's nine spots there, and, you know, that is often dictated by the first person that gets there. If somebody parks sideways, then everybody else kind of has to fall asleep. So part of it is to organize it, to better utilize the space we have. As well as the, the very first spot, spot one, if you've, if you've noticed, uh, is not as deep as the other spots. And so if someone parks there in a large vehicle, it is creating a bottleneck for people that need, um, to access their home, or emergency vehicles, or whatever. So we're just really trying to put some rules in place. A couple of, just quick things I would note. Uh, I'd probably amend, the thing that says, uh, no overnight parking, it might end up saying something like, no overnight parking without, you know, a permit, or, or something along those lines, uh, for people that are going to be, you know, hiking up to Walker's Knob and camping, or something like that.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions, if any?
Tanner, you're not taking away any parking spaces.
No. Yeah, we're, we're trying to, we're trying, trying to just make sure that we can best utilize what we have there.
And Kayla said that it needed to have some language on it, uh, that it was your regs and not ours. Will that be on those signs, too?
Yeah, and in fact, if you would, Josh, throw those back up again, you'll see, well, you'll see, uh, they're, they're in the packet anyway, is a red, uh, it's a sign, it's red with a white outline.
Any other commission questions or comments? Okay. I have a motion already? Do I have a motion? I don't think I do. Can I get a motion on this?
I move approval, subject to those conditions outlined by Kayla.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry. Item G, Florida Terrace Right-of-Way Closure Request. Kayla, you're up again.
Josh, I do need that power panel for this one. Does this little thing work? He gave me a clicker, and it doesn't work, so... Okay. We'll just... Okay. Um, all right. So again, for the record, my name's Kayla DiChristina, and I am the Town of Montrit's zoning administrator. I am here before y'all tonight to discuss, um, a right-of-way closure request on Florida Terrace. The request that's before you tonight is not for any official action. It's merely to give the potential applicant's, um, direction as to whether they can pursue this as an option or not. They have not done the survey or anything. Um, and so I felt that them coming before you, before starting those actions, was, um, most effective. So next slide, please. All right. So the applicant is Mike Begley on behalf of several of the adjoining property owners to this section of right-of-way. In summary, I just said this, but I'll reiterate it. The request is specifically to obtain feedback from the board on whether a right-of-way closure of this nature, whether y'all would be amenable to it, whether you have suggestions before the applicant went and started the process. Next slide, please. Okay. So the location of the requested closure is highlighted in that lime green on the upper right-hand corner. It is, um, just below several of the Montrit College properties adjacent to Florida Terrace. About, I think it's like 480 feet south of Appalachian Way. Next slide, please. So within the area of the potential right-of-way closure, there are no town utilities that we're aware of at this time. There may be an MSD line, and I think there's some concrete. Um, it's never been used as part of the roadway of Florida Terrace. And just to touch on the zoning piece, surrounding it are properties owned IR and institutional. So they are institutional uses, like the college and the MRA, as well as multiple single-family dwellings. And just to note that the three properties that the potential right-of-way closure area abuts, they get their access from Missouri, not from Florida Terrace. Next slide, please. So the right-of-way closure requested area is within the solid green and solid blue areas of the green space agreement. In my memo, uh, in your packets, I went into details about what both of those areas are. Essentially, they're just areas during, that, when the green space agreement was enacted, they were reserved, uh, for roads and utilities, things of that nature. In the orange box that is just above the blue little triangle, that's an area of solid blue right-of-way that was closed in 2003. And then that land was vested with the Montrit College properties on either side. So originally, I believe that, right, that solid blue went all the way up to Appalachian Way. It no longer does that. So that was done quite a while ago. The requested closure area, like I said, is solid blue and solid green. Um, and it abuts the, abuts three property owners, and those three property owners are part of the petitioners for this application.
Kayla?
Yes.
In your left-hand image, I, I see what is being proposed. But if you look at, um, let's see, would that, that would be between Oklahoma and Arkansas, there's a, a, a black or a dark navy band that runs diagonally. Do you see it?
I do.
Could you explain what that is?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
And it's not adjacent to the right-of-way area, so I didn't...
I, I was just wondering if it was a closure that, uh, that we did at some previous time.
Um, I'm not sure, but I can...
Barry knows.
Do you know, Barry?
Well, thanks.
Okay. Um, next slide, please. So again, this request is specifically to obtain feedback on whether or not the applicant should pursue the road closure process. This, um, the request was initiated by one of the adjacent property owners desired to construct a new home. That's the property owned by the Sebastian family with the PIN number 0720152779. Next slide, please. So I wanted to, um, give you background on that request or that action, just because that is what triggered, um, the applicant's pursuing potentially the road closure process, and that's what brings them before you tonight. So the Sebastas approached the previous zoning administrator in 2019, 2020 about purchasing the property with PIN number 0720152779 to inquire about the development potential, any existing zoning restrictions, things like setbacks. So at the time, um, the maps that the zoning administrator uses to determine whether there's a stream, regulatory stream on, on the property, that map did not show a stream running through the property. So the Sebastas kind of had the okay from zoning to go ahead and proceed. So they purchased the lot in 2023, and then they contacted me. When they contacted me, I went back and did a full review of the property and informed them that there was now a stream running, essentially bisecting through the property. Since the previous zoning administrator did not find a stream there, I encouraged them to go to the, um, our regional North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Office to get a stream assessment. Section 305.1 of the Montrit General Ordinance, Chapter K, Article 3, which is the stormwater ordinance, requires a 30-foot built-upon buffer, 30-foot buffer for built-upon areas on intermittent and perennial streams. Um, and so if this was an ephemeral stream, I didn't want to have to impose that buffer. Next slide, please. So the Sebastas, um, obtained a stream determination, and it was found that an intermittent stream now ran through the property. So I reached out to the engineer who did the stream determination to inquire as to why there was now a stream on the property. And they informed me that one of the maps that we use, which is done by the United States Geological Survey, was changed in 2022. And several areas, streams disappeared, and in several areas, streams popped up. And unfortunately, one of the areas where a stream popped up was the Sebastian property. Next slide, please. So I, after many meetings with the Sebastas, I came up with several options for them to pursue. They're on the screen before you, and I've also outlined them, um, in your, in the memos in your packets, and, uh, where the Sebastas are with each of these, um, options today. And I'm happy to talk about any of them if needed. Next slide, please. So, like I said, the request is specifically to obtain feedback from the Board of Commissioners, whether or not the applicant should go ahead and have the area surveyed so that we can begin the road closure process. Should the board recommend proceeding with this, the applicant will have the closure area surveyed after the meets and bounds description is provided to the zoning administrator. They can return to a subsequent Board of Commissioners meeting with a resolution of intent to close for the board to adopt. And then there'll be a public hearing held with notice sent and the site posted. The process is outlined in the North Carolina General Statute 160A-299. Uh, next slide, please. So that's what I've got. Um, do you all have any questions for me?
The packet said that, uh, they started this in 21.
Is it 21?
Yeah.
Okay, 21, then.
So it wasn't that long ago that they were told they could, and then...
No, it, it was, the map change happened in 2021, I, 20, 2022. I don't have my notes in front of me. So, thank you, Commissioner Fouché. Yeah. 20, 2021, yep. What's in the packet is correct. Not my memory.
Any other questions of Kayla? Tom?
And the change that took place was not, um, an error of reading a map on our part. It was an actual change by the U.S. Geological Survey?
Yes, the map was redone in 2022. I reached out specifically to the engineer who did the stream assessment to inquire why that change occurred, to confirm that it wasn't an error. And they shared with me that the maps were changed in 2022, so...
Good. I've got a question of Kayla. And, uh, on this drawing, the property on the other side of the Sebastas is owned by the MRA.
On the south, on the south side?
Yes.
Yes.
Lot 3723. Uh, it appears that that lot projects out into the right-of-way of Florida Terrace. So that there's, in fact, uh, Florida Terrace is encroaching on that lot as, as built, it appears.
Yeah.
So that nearby, we have a, an anomaly with not enough right-of-way. Is that...
Yeah, so, um, I went back and looked at the deed for that property and tried to figure out what happened. And I will just preface this by saying, this is my deed research. And if the MRA has other information, that would trump mine. But based on my deed research, the house may have been built further forward. And so part of the original right-of-way of Florida Terrace was vacated to bring that house onto a property. Um, and all that happened before the town was even incorporated.
Okay, we, we just got some, some apparent boundary line issues regarding the road right next door.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's what I was considering.
And I will note that the, so, um, Josh, can you go back in the PowerPoint to, to like, maybe slide like four? I just want to be clear about where the closure area is. Go back one more. Thank you. Okay, so where the closure area is proposed, that area does not include any of the vehicular travelway of Florida Terrace. Yeah. So just, just to be clear, that the vehicular travelway of Florida Terrace would remain untouched. Yes?
See if I can word this correctly.
Yeah.
If a variance was sought and granted, would that solve the problem? If a variance was sought and granted, would that solve the problem and then avoid the right-of-way closure possibly?
I mean, it would it would depend on what the Svestas were asking for. Right now, I was able to administratively reduce their setback based on the provisions of Section 601, which lets me take the average of the two adjacent structures, their front setbacks. So right now, their front setback is 15.3 feet, and I think their two side setbacks are 15 feet because they're in IR. And so I did a very, very rough calculation based on the plat that I have for the property. And I think it came out to be like, based on the setbacks they have today, like 1,600 square feet total for all of their development. So I'm not sure exactly what their plans are, but certainly a variance was one of the options that I that I included.
Kayla, why did the Svestas not ask for closure just for the property that abuts It looks like the entire right-of-way is being asked to be closed. And the second part of that question then would be, how would that be distributed? Because it wouldn't all go to the Svestas. It would be distributed to the other parties that are adjacent.
Yeah, so I'll just take it piece by piece. So first question, really my role tonight is just to present you all with the information, the background, relevant information from the town's perspective as far as what's in that area. As far as the reason behind the closure, the Svestas and their and Mike Begley are here tonight, so I think they could better answer that question. As far as the the second question, can you remind what the second question was? I'm so sorry.
If the whole right-of-way was closed down?
Yes, yes. Okay, so typically.
Where would it go?
Yeah, typically, when a right-of-way is closed, it's vested right down the middle with the adjoining property owners. I think in this case, it would be vested along the property lines with the property owners that are part of the petition.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments of Kayla?
We'll make an announcement in a minute, Svesta.
Yeah, the applicants are here as well, if you guys have specific questions for them.
Well, fine. It's 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 almost a law school exams where this right-of-way would go. I don't know. Mike is a very learned counsel in North Carolina. It would be in Florida, so I'm sure he's got it figured out, so.
The usual explanation up here is it's it's Montrique. It's just the way it was. Mike, do you agree? You through Kayla?
Yeah, I don't. Do y'all have any other questions?
Any other questions of Kayla?
Okay, I'm here if y'all need to call me.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you.
Yeah, don't go far.
I want, excuse me, my name is Mike Begley of Begley Law Firm, and I'm representing the petitioners. I want to briefly answer the two questions that were just raised, but the petitioner, Svestas, are going to be the ones, I think, to to speak to you at greater length. The survey, when we do it, if we're if that is the direction that we're encouraged to go, will project where those lines will be so that at the time that you're taking action on this, you'll be able to see where those lines would be. But the anticipation, much like Kayla had mentioned, will be a projecting, a projection across from what the current boundaries are of the lots. The reason that the request came to you to close the larger area is that this area that's being requested to be closed would appear to be almost entirely in that unnamed right-of-way and not in Florida Terrace, but the Florida Terrace right-of-way margin is not defined. And so that diagram you've seen is a projection from where Florida Terrace is located northeast of this area to be closed to where the margin of Florida Terrace is at the other end. So that that straight line you see is just connecting where Florida Terrace would be if it were uniform pretty much that entire way. But it is, Florida Terrace is a little wider at the northwest end of what we're looking, you know, the part that we're reviewing, than the southeast end. It looks like, and the survey will show all this, but it looks like it goes from something like 40 or 50 feet wide to something like 30 or 40 feet wide. So that width is not, would not be uniform if you just projected it right through that area. But this has already been entirely closed, this unnamed right-of-way portion has already been entirely closed between the properties that Montrique College owns. And if we close something at the other end for the unnamed right-of-way, we've just left a a segment in the middle that doesn't go out in either direction for traffic or right-of-way purposes. So it made sense to to join those other owners because we otherwise would be closing both ends of that unnamed right-of-way. The other thing I'll just mention about the pinched-up area with MRA tax maps, the reason you get surveys is tax maps are not entirely accurate. They're much better than they used to be because now they use aerial photos. But that may vary by some five, 10 feet, you know, where it is actually wider than it looks. But certainly looks like it pinches up a lot there. So the Svestas want to talk with you about their situation.
Okay. Which Sylvester's coming up?
I'm Charlotte Svesta. We actually own, my family owns the Westburn Trust property located at 330 Florida Terrace. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for entertaining this right-of-way closure request. And secondly, we'd also like to thank Kayla DiChristini for all of her hard work, advice, and recommendations and help in preparing the presentation for us. I'd like to give you a bit of background as to why we are asking for this. My family has owned the Westburn Trust property since 1957, when my grandparents moved here to retire. And so when my husband and I started looking for a place that we wanted to build a retirement home, Montrique was at the top of our list. And we had this additional lot, it's 0.2 acres, that was part of the family trust property. And that's why we ended up with that little lot right there. And along with my sister and brother-in-law, and my husband and I, we're all planning to be interred down at the Sibley Memorial Garden, so we feel like we're going to be here forever. We're never going to leave. So when we first started the process in 2021 to buy the lot, we met with a couple of builders and Maury Hurt, who's an architect, a local architect, to see if it was feasible to build something on that small lot of 0.2 acres. And we did our due diligence with the current zoning administrator at the time to make sure that we would have enough space for what we envisioned for a retirement home. And from everything that he told us at that time, that it was feasible, that we could build what we wanted on. And we relied on the information that we were provided at the time that did not have the stream on that map. So we had a lot surveyed, a topographical survey in 2022. We had two appraisals done to ascertain the fair market value of the property. And then we negotiated with the other trust members, my brother and my sister, and we purchased the property in August of 2022. So we came back this spring, 2023, all ready to start meeting with Maury and start designing our home to be built. And my husband said, well, let's just check with zoning, just, you know, make sure nothing has changed, you know, with everything. And so that's when we contacted Kayla to take a look at all the maps and when we found out about the zoning, the zoning restriction with the buffer. And so that's where we are today. When we discovered the change in the stream designation necessitating a 30-foot buffer, which Kayla had described, we went back to Maury Hurt with his development and which would vastly change. He said that's going to vastly change sort of your vision of what, you know, you want to build on your lot. So Maury Hurt suggested that we contact Mike Begley, who has knowledge and experience in this area, and that's what we did. We want to respect the 30-foot buffer and preserve the area around the stream according to all the local, state, and federal regulations. Therefore, we are pursuing this other option, which would allow us to honor the buffer, but to still build the house that meet would meet our needs in our retirement. And now my husband, Mike, has a little bit more explanation.
Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you again. I want to reiterate our appreciation for everybody tonight to entertain this this petition. Josh, if I can get slide 195 that was in the packet, packet slide, I wanted to start with the original survey that we did back in, we talked about a survey in 2021, 2022 on the actual property, the lot. And as you'll see by the survey, and I think it's slide 195 in your packet, it's not a big lot, and it is roughly about 115 feet deep by 65. So going back to what Charlotte was talking about, we met with the planning administrator, Maury, how big a house could you build on that? And we were surprised because the planning, the zoning administrator, Scott Adams, actually provided us with a sketch that indicated we could build a house that was 3,000 square feet. Like, wow, okay, well, that's more than adequate for our needs. We're really thinking about 2,500 square feet, but that's fine. We can build a smaller house. So anyway, the in the survey, you'll see that the stream is about 45 feet up from Florida, excuse me, Missouri Road. And so that is actually, it's not a, the IR, the the setback is 25 feet, but the stream is about 45 feet up from Missouri Road. So that's that's not really the full, full map, but a full survey. So we're really talking about squeezing a house into the upper two-thirds of the lot. Well, you'll see from the survey that it's a very small stream, but now that it's reclassified as a intermittent stream, we're subject to the 30-foot buffer, you're now talking about a 75-foot setback from Missouri Road, and the original lot dimensions are only 115 feet. Now, as Kayla mentioned, we did get some relief on the front setback. So we're really talking about a house at this point with existing setbacks of approximately 1,200 square feet. And as Charlotte mentioned, we are really looking forward to building a retirement home here in Montrique. So anyway, so the question is, you know, that really answers why we're trying to pursue this right now, because with this petition, if it is approved, it would give us 15 feet roughly from that front setback. Our plans are not to build anything on the the right-of-way, the unnamed right-of-way. It's strictly a buffer that we will use for parking only. And just to be clear, the unnamed right-of-way, we have been using for parking at Westburn Trust since the 1950s. So we use it as, and we maintain it, we don't really, you know, we put gravel down, we'll trim up the bushes, but we use it almost exclusively for parking. But we do not intend at all to build any structure on that unnamed right-of-way if it's withdrawn. Oh, that that's the survey, so thank you. And so you'll just see from that survey that once you start adding all these buffers, you just, it's really not buildable. So that's that's why we're here. And why not pursue the other, you know, variances or petitions or text amendments? Well, in speaking with Mike Begley, speaking with Maury Hurt, speaking with others, I've read a lot of minutes, town minutes from Montrique. I actually do like to read the minutes, so I appreciate you publishing them and making them so accessible. And I've gone back 19, 2018, 2019, 2020, and I know there's been a history in Montrique with potentially some of these road closures, and we feel like this is the most efficient way. And, you know, we're a little bit behind on our scheduling. We were hoping to start planning and designing our plans this year. You know, we're now looking at sometime, you know, mid to probably mid next year, if all goes according to plan. So we just would like to, you know, like to move things along if possible. So that's that's kind of where we are and why we're pursuing this particular angle. With regard to the other property owners, as we mentioned, we do use it for parking. The Boyd property has a section, they're currently not using that for parking. But the new lot, the Svesta lot, we're not going to have really hardly any parking available. And it's sort of quite obvious that parking, particularly in that area, has become a little bit of a problem on on-street parking. In fact, there is no on-street parking on either side of Florida Terrace or Missouri Road. And we have occasionally utilized the parking lot, the Montrique College parking lot, which is right, right across the street. But our understanding is that that's restricted, it's parking permit only. And so there's no parking in the parking lot, there's no parking on on-street. So we feel like it would be important that the other property owners have access to that driveway as well. And and what we've agreed to with all property owners is that we would have an access agreement, that all property owners would have access in perpetuity along that unnamed right-of-way for parking purposes. And so the Boyd's, we talked to them, and they would like it for overflow parking. They have a driveway, but it's a narrow driveway, there's no turnaround, and they would like to have the ability to have a turnaround plus excess parking. Because there is, like I said, I know that Chris Curry, the son, who's a friend of mine, he uses that parking lot across the street. So I, you know, I, that's another reason, in addition to Mike Begley's rationale, why the other property owners would participate in this petition and this request. So I'll stop there. Answer any questions?
Mike, is the driveway big enough that when it becomes everybody's driveway, do you have parking there that other people can get by you?
That's a great question. And by the way, all the questions tonight have been really good. And they've really just just hit all the salient points. Currently, no. But there's, it's it's quite overgrown back there. And so the idea is that if it's deeded back to the owners, we will be responsible for maintaining that property, and we will do some clearing, add some gravel, and we'll have plenty of access. I've been spending the last couple of days up here just looking at it. And we will create space to have ingress egress abilities for all homeowners, including the Boyd's, to be able to turn around and to park easily. And just the other day, we had some maintenance people there that had three or four trucks lined up down the driveway, and really, you can't, you can't turn around, and, you know, you got to back up, and it's just not very convenient. So we will make sure that there's adequate areas for turnarounds, parking for all three homeowners. And one other thing I might mention, if this goes through, I mean, we will be obviously paying taxes on that, too. So we will, it would be added to our property values, we will be paying taxes. You know, we bought the lot in, I don't know, within a couple of weeks, I got a notice from the county that they'd be taxing us. So, you know, that is, that is part of it, too. So what that's worth.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Okay.
I'd still like to know just where this stream is. I didn't see it on any of the.
Can I just step, can I step off, show you? You can't really see it. It says branch right here. And that's, that's, that's the branch right there that runs through the stream. Now, we have, this is a rock, just a walkway, stone walkway that we. Now, we have, this is a rock, just a walkway, stone walkway that we've had for years, that Charles' dad put in. This used to be part of the same property. And so when we bought it, we had to have it, in addition to this survey, we had to have it replatted. It's now in our name, and so we had it separated. But that stream runs right through the bottom. In fact, it's really not even a stream. We were shocked when it got reclassified. I mean, if you went down there, I mean, we would come up here certain summers, and there'd be no water. I mean, it wouldn't, it only originates right there at Balsam. It goes through our property, cuts through Westburn, goes through a culvert, and empties into, underneath the parking lot. So we're the only homeowners in Montreat that are impacted by this stream designation. And it just feeds in, there's two large branches, as you know, Punchin Branch and Kitchen Branch, and those were the two streams that are predominantly in these geological maps. And this just popped up, and, you know, it's not like anybody would be required to let us know, and we didn't know, that they would even subject to change, but there's something called detrimental reliance, and that's, we're sort of the victim of that, in that we relied on information that was provided to us, fact, it was reliable, it was accurate at the time, and now, when we find out that that information, as it turns out, is not correct, that there is a stream designation, and we did not know that, through no fault of anybody, anywhere, not with the town, not with the state, it was just, information has changed.
Yeah, but the information was correct when it was given to you by the town.
It was given to us, right.
Yes, okay. Just want to make that clear.
And if we had filed permits and started building, it wouldn't have mattered.
Understood.
But now, it does matter, and it's, you know, to our detriment that we made a decision, bought the lot, et cetera, but it was through no fault. And I will reiterate, Kayla has been working tirelessly on this, and given the fact that she doesn't work a full week, or she has to, it's pretty amazing. I'm sorry, I'm spending too much time.
Do you have any more presentation, Mike, or y'all?
No, we're good.
That it? Okay. Heard both that. Kayla?
As you're coming up, Kayla, is that classified, is it an intermittent or an ephemeral?
The DWR stream classification classified it as intermittent. I was just coming up to say, one other thing that I wanted to add was that if this, excuse me, if this request were to go through and be pursued, town staff would ask for a 10-foot public utility easement along the length of the west-eastern boundary of the closure area, because even though there aren't city-town utilities in it now, we want to preserve the right to install them if needed later, and it's something that Barry and I talked about. So I just wanted to add that in, if that was just relevant.
So my question, as you were walking up, would be directed to you as well as Barry, and I think you mentioned it early on, is there anything that we have going through this at this time?
No.
Water lines or anything that would handicap us now or in the future if this land was relinquished?
Barry, you shaking your head, no?
And is there any pros or cons? Does this free, if this land was let go, does this free your staff up with things that we're doing now on there as far as maintenance, or?
Or does it burden you?
Yeah, does it hurt you or help you?
As far as public works view, as far as utilities-wise, we have what we need in the current roadway. All of our water lines right there shouldn't need upgraded for many, many years, and we have room to do that upgrade if we need be. And as far as maintenance down in that area, you know, years ago, we've had to remove trees, you know, there's stormwater issues and stuff like that that we've had to do over, you know, over the years, but I mean, that would free us up there, yes.
So that's just, it frees you more than, it's not handcuffing the town in any way that you see now or in the future?
No, sir.
And we would ask for that 10-foot public utility easement just in case any new utilities needed to be installed outside of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioners, I need a motion before you discuss it amongst yourselves, either yea or nay.
We're only asking.
Move to direct or not direct the zoning administrator to prepare a resolution.
I'm going to direct the zoning administrator to prepare a resolution. I'm attempting for the proposed closing areas as defined by the North Carolina Administration Statute 1060899, the board, issues to meet, at a future board meeting.
I have a motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fouché.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Otto. Discussion.
I think we've had precedent set for this a couple of other times, and as Barry said, it would not only free him from the liability of having to deal with trees, which he's been doing in the past, and stormwater, it also gives us increased tax income and welcomes a new home to the area, and I would be for approving this when it comes up.
And then to follow up on that, you talked about reading the minutes and such, you know, and it's not a question to you that you have to answer, but thank you. It's just, you know, my position has been, it's the town's land, and I think we need to hold on to things, we need to be careful on road closures, whatever, to Commissioner Fouché. We have set precedence, though, in some places, that with the uniqueness of Montreat, it made sense for us to let go of some things. You know, I'm disappointed that all of a sudden a creek has popped up, you know, that's Montreat, and again, the uniqueness of the lot lines. So as I look at that and the potential for a new home being here, getting tax revenues, and again, premium, but additional parking places, you know, and maybe something that benefits not just you and the neighbors, you know, on the surface, I think it's something that we should pursue. And I'm not saying give you my blessing on it, but I was saying it's something we should pursue.
Commissioner comments?
I'll just say, I think it's a bit, following up with what Kent said, I think it's something we certainly want to look at carefully, but I also think, I'm just giving you my first impression, and trying to be candid, because I know that's what you want me to be, because in a month from now, or two months from now, I'll vote. And the request seems on the face for me to be a bit overbroad, in the sense that it's a great deal more than is needed. And I'm certainly in favor of doing what we can to make your lot buildable and fix the problem you've got. But beyond fixing that problem and giving away town property that will, for nothing, nobody's asking to buy it, you want it for free. And I understand helping you and dealing with your boundary line to deal with the stream thing that popped up, but for the other lots who don't need this property, they can also utilize this property with agreements with the town, parking agreements, which the town routinely enters into with landowners for parking adjacent to their homes, and to give them the right to park there if they don't already have the right. So nobody's not able to use their home because of parking, it's just, and maybe the other folks can convince me differently, that somehow there's a genuine need for the town to basically give them this property for nothing. But my knee-jerk reaction as Kent is, I don't know why, absent a public purpose, that we give away town property for nothing. Certainly to provide right-of-way, vacate right-of-way, to make your home possible, that certainly serves the perfect public purpose, as Kitty said, to allow you to build your home, to get it on the tax rolls, I'm in favor of that. But where it doesn't serve, where I can see a public purpose, it's just simply giving somebody some property they currently don't absolutely need in any way. My, at least my first impression, and again, I'm willing to talk, I'm willing to be convinced otherwise, but I tend to be negative towards that aspect of it.
Commissioner Widmer, do you have a comment on this?
It's been a struggle just thinking this through, and appreciate all the presentations tonight, but I do concur with Commissioner Blake. You know, once we give property away, we can't get it back. That's the thing. I would much prefer to see them appear before the Board of Adjustment and request a variance, rather than us just handing over town property. What comes of that would be that if the Board of Adjustment turns them down, they could still come back to us, and perhaps things will have changed by then, even our own opinions on things on the closure of the right-of-way. So I cannot support the motion.
Okay, I've heard it. Kitty?
Why would you want to, you've already given away property on one side, you've given away this property for them to go to their house, why do you want to keep this little strip of nothing in the corner? I mean, we would be driving over somebody else's property to get to it.
I don't think that's the way it would lay out, Kitty.
Yeah, I don't understand.
And I've got to get out there to walk the property, which we weren't, I wasn't able to do. I've been out of town until this afternoon. I don't think it, I don't think it works on the ground that way. I think the folks can still get back to their property or make arrangements with them to get back to their property. We haven't seen any site plans, so...
Well, I mean, right now, they use that driveway in this, you know, this public, they use that to get to their house, because their house is spaced along the terrace.
Well, I see some asphalt here, but I'm not sure where this comes down, but it would come down there.
It comes right from outside Balsam, it's called, Balsam, Balsam, come from, go right now, and they use that as their driveway and their parking right now.
Maybe they can show me that in the interim. I'm not seeing it on the maps I see now, and I'm sorry, been out of town all week and haven't been able to get out and walk the property.
Well, look on page 213.
Okay.
See that green strip? When you come down from Florida Terrace, all of that green strip right now is, all the useful part of it is used by the board parking.
I don't know how, what, if the Sebastas, if the Sebastas were the only persons, if you took their property line and you went out, and they got this piece.
Right.
I don't know how that prohibits the other people from using.
That's the only way to get to it.
You're only cutting off one small corner of it.
If there's no way to get around that to get the other piece of property.
There's lots of room.
It's not.
Y'all have made your presentation.
Council discussion now.
Well, I'll look at it, Kitty, I'm just, I'm just...
Well, I can tell you that there's no room to go around that property to get to the other, and it would cut off, if they owned that property and maybe sold it, then the other two houses would have no way of getting.
Hey, Commissioners, you'd be better off going after them, looking at it themselves so that you'll know, you know, to be sure.
Could we make a motion to table this? I know that Sebastas...
Absolutely, you can table it.
I don't want to do that, but it may be, in the long term, better for the town as well as the Sebastas, if we could table it till next month.
If you want a decision tonight, you're probably not going to get one, because it's going to end up being tabled, and I see the two-to-two split, and I would say go to the Board of Adjustment myself, and I'm tiebreaker tonight.
Let me ask one more question, maybe if Kayla...
No, you're through, with Kayla.
All right, let me ask you, does having a right of variance allow them to move their building closer to their current property line?
That's what the request would be.
Right up to that property?
Probably not right up to, but if you do it.
I'm looking at Kayla, I understand that it would depend, you know, so of course, it would allow them to move it up, but where exactly, it would depend on the Board of Adjustment decision.
They can ask for what they want, the Board of Adjustment can grant what they feel is appropriate.
Well, I suggest we table it then, because I don't think a negative answer in this situation is the right thing to do.
We've got a motion on it.
We've got a motion on the table, though. I need a yea or a nay on the motion on the floor, which was to allow.
Well, wait a second. But the tabling...
Okay. I need a motion to table, then.
Which I did. I move that we table this.
Good motion, Tom. Do I have a second? Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a sec. All those in favor of tabling the motion until next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. Texas Road Bridge, who's going to address that?
Yes, sir. I am, I will give just a very brief overview, which is that we received a communication from Gabe Johnson with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to let us know that the total estimated cost for the Texas Road Bridge project, we're now looking at $900,000, so the town's portion of that would be $180,000. So after some discussion, I think my recommendation would be that we release the grant and look at some other alternatives, and I'm just going to defer to Commissioner Widmer for any additional information.
Tom, you and Mason have been involved in this, go ahead.
Well, two years ago, we approached the Land of Sky Metropolitan Planning Organization for a grant, and it was a grant to do the structural work, nothing aesthetic, the structural work, and to replace or repair the bridge. The, working with Alex, who was around at that time, and Barry, the estimate was $191,000. So we went to the MPO, asked them what they thought about us proposing this, for this LAP grant, and they said, yeah, go for it. And they were excited, because it was low cost, it could get done quickly, and it would be something that they could lift up and say, look what's happened. Well, everything that I just outlined didn't happen. The $191,000, as was just stated by Savannah, has gone to $900,000. And that is not the aesthetic portion, that is a bridge across the current space. And that would not be our cost, but we know that that's not the right way to spend money, whether it's our money or federal money or whatever, and it's just going to get higher and higher. So as a result, we, much of this cost is simply because we're working with NC DOT and the federal government. So what we'd like to do is say, thanks, but no thanks to the loan or to the grant, and then we're pursuing private, our own ways of doing it. We've got a small task force to help us think this thing through of Montreeters who have significant experience in development, roads, bridges, and engineering, and that's what our, that's what we'd like to do.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion about returning it?
Do you have any further comments?
No, just to thank Tom for a lot of work, and also town staff for working on this, but it was a bit like a Lewis, being in a Lewis Carroll story. I mean, you would, we would get to these meetings, and the number would go up. At one meeting, it went from like four to five to 600,000 in the meeting, and three weeks later, it's 900,000, and, you know, we're not in Kansas anymore. So it was bizarre, but thank you, Tom, for all the hard work. But thank you, Tom, for all the hard work you've spent on this grant and trying to make this thing work.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we not proceed in accepting the Land of Sky MPO LAP grant for the replacement of the Texas Road Bridge.
I have a motion from Commissioner Widmer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Mayor Lieutenant Blake. Discussion?
If you're confused, you're not as confused as much as we are.
You had to be there to.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. Floor's open for any public comment? Kayla?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the, I can ask questions, right? Can I, I can ask questions? Okay. I know, I just, I wanted to get some clarification for the Florida Terrace right-of-way closure. What information would be helpful in making y'all's decision? Were you looking to table it to next month? I'm going to communicate with the applicants, and I want to just give them the best process forward.
What would help me would be a field trip.
Field trip.
Going out there and looking at it and walking it.
Okay. Is there any other information that would be helpful?
Kayla, I can send an email out tomorrow, maybe, to allow them to gather their thoughts about what would be helpful and then share that with you.
Okay, that's fine.
Was that helpful?
It's fine.
I mean, I think we all, we all support Commissioner Fouchet's wanting to help these people make this work. I don't think there's any question about that.
Okay.
It's just, I'm just, I need more information to get there.
Okay. Well, if you guys will share with Savannah what other information from staff or the applicant y'all would find helpful, I'd be happy to work to pull that together. And if you guys can let me know when you would expect to hear it again on the agenda if the applicant still wanted to pursue this option. Okay? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Say none. Commissioners' communication?
I've got two. Go ahead. Okay, yeah, that's right. Yes, I've got three things. One, I apologize to the Commission, but I will not be here at the next meeting. I will be, I'll be out of the country, actually. Two, I think we ought to advise the general public and citizens of Montreat that although we've not received the final decision in the appeal of the lodge appeal, oh, we know what the decision, the ultimate decision is, but we've not received the final order. Our council requested to withdraw from representing County Montreat. County Montreat objected to her withdrawal. We, the mayor and I and Savannah went, attended a hearing, lodged those objections ourselves. However, the court gave her permission to withdraw from representation of us. And therefore, just want everybody to know, we're having to interview potential new counsel to advise the city when, in fact, we do hear from the judge and receive the final order. And just want that not to be a surprise to anybody, but that be discussed in an open hearing. The last thing I want to mention is, back this spring, Commissioner Alexander and I went to a state meeting organized by the North Carolina League of Municipalities. We met with our Eric Ager, our district representative that includes Montreat. Jane and I, or Commissioner Alexander and I, talked with him about coming and visiting Montreat after the legislative session was over, both to give a report to us here in Montreat about what happened in the session and to also talk to us about it, what we may be looking forward to in the next legislative session. And so we've arranged for Representative Ager to be here on the 19th of October. And he's available, it's 4:30 to 6:00, a good time for everybody. Okay, we're going to have it at 4:30 to 6:00. And so I'd like to make that announcement that the public will be invited, and it's your show. It's really for all the citizens of Montreat to have the opportunity to meet Representative Ager and to ask him questions. And so it ought to be very interesting. That's it.
Tom, nothing tonight. Kitty, anything tonight?
I just wanted one thing. The bears, we've talked about plenty. But now they are going after larvae from the yellow jackets. And we've had two incidences in my neighborhood. One where they tore down a wall, a rock wall, trying to get in to the larvae. And now, and they were calling and said that they tore the siding off of her house and tore into the insulation trying to get to larvae. So see where your yellow jacket, yes, are. That's it.
Yes, my message is a little different tonight, but just for public record, I need to state that I'll be resigning as a Commissioner effective September 15, 2023. And just with much regret that I share that. But my wife and I have looked for the past two years for another home here in Montreat and just have not been fortunate enough to find another one. But we have found a home in Black Mountain, so we will remain neighbors, but we'll just be on the other side of the gate moving forward. And I just want to say, it's just been an honor to serve my neighbors. And I just thank you for entrusting me with this position over the past few years. My family and I would say we've been very blessed by this opportunity and the folks that we've met. And then lastly, Mayor Board, it's been a joy and a privilege to work with the caliber of people that I work with, but just to say that you're my neighbors. And obviously, the staff, it's a wonderful staff, wonderful mayor. I just appreciate it. Ms. Parrish, wish I had a little bit more opportunity to work with you, but I just know you'll be a good fit for Montreat. And then certainly Angie, you're kind of the glue and the face of Montreat, and it's been a joy, and I appreciate you keeping me in line all these years. But anyway, I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity and look forward to crossing paths at Ingles or some other good restaurant in Black Mountain.
What would you say if I wouldn't accept your resignation?
I second that.
Kent and I, Kent and Kitty and I have been at this longer than anybody else sitting up here. Kent was the appointed replacement for me when, the first time I ran for mayor. And it certainly has been a joy. He's become a good friend. He always brings a common sense approach to problems here in Montreat and has solved many things. And he's just been diligent. But he's always been a conservative, conservative person with the money and everything else we've ever done on this board. And I'm going to miss him dearly. I know everybody will. Okay.
Kent, it was a blessing for all of us to work with you.
Indeed.
Dates to remember. Tree Board, Tuesday, September the 26th at 9:30 here. Board of Adjustment meeting, Thursday, September the 28th, 5:00 p.m. here. Land Care, Wednesday, October the 4th, 9:00 a.m. here. October Board of Commissioners meeting, Thursday, October the 12th, at 7:00 p.m. Public forum to begin at 6:30 in Town Hall. Zoom options are available on all of these meetings. Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, October the 19th, at 10:30 a.m. in Town Hall. Tree Board, Tuesday, October the 24th, at 9:30 a.m. in Town Hall. And Board of Adjustment, tentatively scheduled for Thursday, October the 26th, at 5:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. And before we adjourn, what was that other date? The Ager's going to be here?
October 19th.
October 19th.
4:30 to 6:00.
4:30 to 6:00, okay. Y'all want to go home? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Widmer to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The last second you'll do, isn't it?
There you go.
Second by Commissioner Otto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Folks, we stand adjourned, and thank you for coming.